Yeah, I'm
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Anacortes City Council meeting of September 2nd, 2025. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Franciac, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Fantini.
Here.
Mr. Young. Mr. Walters. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Molton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Heebic.
Here.
Thank you.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
I move to excuse Councilmember Walters from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Molton, a second by Ms. Heebic to excuse Mr. Walters. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? All right, start with some announcements and committee reports. I've got a few announcements. First off, just a reminder to everybody, tomorrow is back to school day here in Anacortes. So students will be returning tomorrow and there will be kids loading on buses, walking in crosswalks, riding their bikes. So please be extra careful and mindful in school zones. Also, let's see, next week, September 9th, we will be hosting the Skagit County Department of Emergency Management for a Hazard Mitigation Plan Open House. And this is, they'll have some partner folks from public safety agencies throughout Skagit County to take public input on proposed mitigation actions to be included in the 2025 Hazard Mitigation Plan. Again, 6:30 to 8:30 September 9th, right here in City Hall Council Chambers. Popular day, September 13th is a big day. September 13th is a big day, so plan accordingly. Residential cleanup day, Saturday, September 13th, 9 to 12, and then Senior Resource Fair Saturday also. And that's at the Senior Activity Center, 10 to 2. And then, again, this is a free event. More than 60 businesses, nonprofit agencies will be on site to share information about healthcare, financial support, and community programs and more. Again, at the Senior Activity Center, 10 to 2. And then finally, on the 13th, Skagit Marine Resources Committee will be hosting a free fun family outing at the Samish Indian Nations Fidalgo Bay Resort, and that's 11 to 3. So if you plan your day right, you can hit all of them. Again, everybody's welcome. At this event celebrates our local estuaries and history in marine life. So, well, it's great to see so many folks here and welcome to the Navy. And I can say that as a 22-year retired Navy guy. So thank you all for being here. Because our first item, oh, is going to be a civilian lifesaving award. And this is a presentation. And Chief Harris, and I'd be remiss if I didn't welcome the commanding officer of NAS Whidby Island, Nate Gamash. Welcome. Good to see you, sir. All right, Chief Bill.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Miller, members of council. Tonight, we have an opportunity to present three civilian lifesaving medals. On the morning of July 27th, just before 2:00 a.m., AFD units were dispatched to a building fire at the Parallel 49 Apartments. On arrival, our crews found a smoke-filled apartment and a sprinkler system activated. They also found a man seated just outside the apartment with burns to his face and hands. How he got to be outside is why we're here tonight. While others were evacuating, three of the residents took it upon themselves to try and find out what was happening. They noticed smoke and water coming from the fire apartment, and knowing that the occupant was elderly and disabled, they made the decision to take action. So if I could please have Breann Perry, who you may have noticed is an active-duty sailor, John Butler, retired marine, and Skylar Crockett come up to the front, please. I'll read the citation of the award. The civilian lifesaving medal is given for extraordinary heroism and swift action in the face of imminent danger. They are hereby recognized with the civilian lifesaving medal. On July 27th, 2025, at the Parallel 49 Apartments, they demonstrated exceptional courage and selflessness by entering an apartment that was on fire and removing the disabled occupant to safety. Without regard for personal safety, they acted decisively and effectively, directly contributing to the preservation of human life. This act of bravery reflects the highest ideals of civic duty and compassion. Their actions serve as an inspiring example to the community and embody the spirit of humanity at its finest. Thank you very much.
Again, incredible example of bravery and what a, what an example to set for our, our fellow citizens to be able to do that. So thank you very much. All right, well, we'll move on to our regular agenda. And again, feel free to, if you have other things to do, this, this would be a good time. Although I'm sure everybody want, first up, Finance Committee. I, I don't think, see Josh. There, I don't believe the Finance Committee met. And, okay, so we will move on to Public Works Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Molton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met this afternoon at 5:00 p.m. It was Councilmember Young and myself, Public Works Director Andrew Rayum, Stormwater Manager Aaron Esterhold, and City Engineer Logan Lee. And we had, we had guests tonight at our meeting. Two people from out on Coho Way, which is, intersects with Sunset Drive on the way out to Washington Park, talking about safety issues out there. And the difficulty of crossing that kind of offset goofy intersection right at the entrance to Skyline, and about safety issues there and lack of visibility from people coming down the hill, especially around sunset hours when the sun's in their eyes, and lack of visibility. So we talked about different options. What we could do in the meantime potentially is to have a sign that, we have a sign there now that shows flashes and shows the speed that people are going, which tends to work quite well. The batteries periodically die, need to be replaced. So we talked about keeping that up. So that that's, that's a stopgap measure that does help. But anything that we do that would be of a more permanent nature would involve a major change of the infrastructure there and would be quite costly. And just sort of a number that was thrown out was $300,000. So what do we, so putting that in the capital facilities plan, looking for grants. Apparently, there's a carbon reduction grant that's available that paid for our Q Avenue crossings that are being worked on right now. So that would be a good one to apply for. So anyway, it was great to have two citizens come before us with their concerns. And I think that we'll be hearing more from people in that neighborhood. And that's the best way for us to know what's going on. So we really appreciated the conversation. So we'll keep working on that. Then we talked about traffic safety and some other things that, that citizens have brought up about speeding and signs and parking. So there are a few things that came up with some staff recommendations. And we didn't take any action, but we learned about what these things are and what the APD recommends in these various circumstances. So I guess the upshot is everybody be safe, don't speed, and look both ways twice. But anyway, more details will follow on those particular items.
Thank you. Any questions for Public Works Committee? All right, Museum Committee.
Mayor Miller. The Museum Committee met last week. It was Councilmember Heebic, Museum Director Brett Lunsford, and myself. I think all of council received kind of an update that was sent out by Brett, which I very much appreciate because I think a lot of times it's helpful to hear directly from the directors of the departments, what's happening in their departments. But just to highlight for the public, Museum of, Music of Anacortes exhibit is starting in late October, but you can get kind of a taste for what is going to be in that on the museum website, Substack, Setrakana. And a lot of the music and artifacts have been inventoried. Some of it is already actually on display in the museum and you can see it. There's going to be a really cool kind of tour that folks can take around Anacortes and listen to music at places that have inspired it or where it has been recorded and what has been made. So that'll be very neat. We also got an update on the circumnavigation of Fidalgo Island. So that was inspired by last year's music walking tour. And this is the cruise around Fidalgo Island that is kind of a story map to align with, with a lot of the history. It's still being developed and there's going to be additional links and everything, but they partnered with Island Adventures. And it was funny, while Ms. Heebic and I were in there, probably four people came in to specifically just talk about how great that cruise was because they were on it. And we looked at Brett and we were like, did you? And he's like, I swear I didn't set this up. But they came right in and, and so that's, that's great. And something that they're hoping to, to continue moving forward. They also mentioned that there, there was a pre-app meeting in May for the Museum Storage Workshop Building Project. And that led to the realization that a rezone of the property of the museum is on, needs to occur as the next step. So I believe that planning staff is working on that now to get it into the comprehensive plan. And also just an update that the fall hours at the Maritime Heritage Center and WT Preston in September and October, those are going to shift. The Maritime Heritage Center will be open year-round and shift to a Thursday through Sunday schedule from September through May. But the Anacortes Museum will remain open six days a week all year. And you can, of course, visit the museum website to, to get all those updates as well. So.
Thank you. Questions for the Museum Committee? All right, next up, Port City Liaison Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. So this morning, we had our Port City Liaison meeting. And I was there for the first half. So Mr. Fantini will probably have to finish up the other, the second half of it. But we talked about the event center and kind of, and moving forward. Our main focus was the fact that we got those interlokal signed. And now we can go to the next step, which is starting to articulate what we want from the architects for the next, the 30, 60, and 90% completions. Our main point is that we need to do a lot of preparatory work, both at the port and city level to make sure we articulate what we want, what direction we want to go into. And then also that, while we heard a lot of positive feedback and support when we sign those interloacles, there was interest in making sure that some of the stakeholders who are going to be using the facility is, are able to have the opportunity to make sure that functionality makes sense in the design. So while there are things that, things, pretty things that we would like to do more of, we are really focused on making sure that the, the building meets its purpose, that we can keep it within a budget that we can afford, and that it works for all of the user groups moving forward. And at that point, I had to exit for a dentist appointment.
Sorry about that. There was also some around-the-room talk. A couple of the topics that came up was, of course, the construction that's going down right now at the intersection of Commercial and 12th Street. And there's been a slight little delay there. So when digging up the concrete sidewalks on the 12th and Commercial intersection, we discovered some power lines that were, and forgive me, I'm not a public works expert, but I'm going to just say fused underneath the concrete. So they kind of got severed. So that is going to create a slight 30-day delay in the, the progress there. So, but again, I do have a view of that pretty much every day. And traffic, it's still open. Traffic is still moving and everybody seems to still be in a very good mood about it, which is so, so clearly we're doing okay there. The other thing that came up is that there are going to be about 150 truckloads of some very giant pipe that are going to be trucked through the truck route. It happens during the day, but we should be expecting to see a lot of pipe coming through town. Otherwise, that was about all you, you missed.
All right. Any questions for Port City? Okay, next up is Public Safety Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Heebic.
Thank you. Public Safety met earlier today. It was Councilmember Cleveland McGrath and myself along with our Fire and Police Chiefs. Along the lines of people being in a good mood, I have good news to share that should put a smile on a lot of people's faces. Thanks to all of the work that our citizens have approved, we are planning to be fully staffed come December. There are two positions in the paramedic and fire that are waiting to have conditional offers accepted. And then there's a lot of field training that's either been finished early or is nearly completed. Two folks are in Week 4 of Academy and we're looking forward to a December graduation. So thank you so much to everybody in your hard work and your support and to all of the staffers who have made this happen, to all of the community members who have helped to amplify the positions that were open. So we're about to be fully staffed. Looks like it's going to be a really good 2026. And then we were also given an update about a new 911 user fee model that goes into effect in 2026. There's an increase in police, but a decrease in fire total cost to the city will go down at nearly $13,000. So it's cost to the city, not reimbursements to the city. And then there was another bit of conversation that we had about wildfire concerns. The way that wildfires are evacuated are not necessarily the same as like tsunamis or other things like that because fires are so, they're, they're really, really alive. They change with the wind, they change with whatever debris or houses, hopefully not that they consume. But there's not always going to be a very clear evacuation route. So we talked about the different kind of warning systems that were happening or that are available to use and got a little bit of background on what the Department of Natural Resources can offer in case of a fire. And that was it. It was a quick meeting.
Questions for Public Safety? All right, any other announcements or committee reports that I may have missed?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantini.
I just quickly wanted to draw attention. I'm reminded seeing Ms. Martin out here. There was a really good planning committee meeting that took place this past Wednesday. A lot of great discussion around the comp plan, a lot of great public comment, a lot of engagement from our constituents. I found it really helpful to watch. And anybody out there watching, it's, it's a, it's a worthwhile watch.
Planning Commission meeting, that was last Wednesday, correct? Okay, and it's recorded. All right, any other announcements or committee reports? All right, next up is public comment. Opportunity to comment to counsel anything that's not on our agenda. So the only one for public comment is the general sewer plan. So anything else you want to adjust the council? Nobody signed up. And nobody's got their hand raised online. Okay, I'll move on to our consent agenda, items 5A through C, council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Heebic.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, C.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Heebic, a second by Mr. Young to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And with that, I will remind, another announcement to make is this Saturday, there will be a bike ride that will go through town from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Expect almost 1,000 bicycles to be coming through town. But again, mostly on our, our bike routes and greenways and Tommy Thompson trestle. So just be aware. Please pay attention to our cyclists. Okay, on to other business, item 6. And first up is 6A. And General Sewer Plan, a status update and draft capital facilities plan. This is a presentation. Mr. Rayum and guests and supporting cast whenever you're ready.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last week, we presented, oh, sorry, Andy Rayum, Public Works Director. Last week, we presented to you how the water system plan was developed, what projects it identified as necessary in the next 20 years, and how that was used to inform the proposed six-year capital facilities plan. Tonight, we will have the same conversation about the general sewer plan. This is just an informational presentation to prepare you for the six-year capital facilities plan discussion starting later this month. Kenny Packard with HDR is here tonight to present how the general sewer plan generated the wastewater systems capital facility needs. We will have a draft general sewer plan for council consideration in a later time, once we have completed staff review, Department of Ecology review, and SEPA review. After Kenny has completed his presentation, then we'll have Rhonda Peck come from the Finance Department to provide the fiscal analysis for the sewer utility. She will also present the fiscal analysis of the stormwater utility. So you have all three utilities freshened in your mind when you enter the capital facilities discussion. And with that, I'll hand it over to Kenny.
Thank you, Sandy. Hello, everyone. I'm Kenny Packard. I'm with HGR Engineering. I have a background in, okay, a background in kind of holistic water system type stuff, including wastewater and drinking water. I've been working with the city of Anacortes for probably about 12 years now, starting in the later parts of your water treatment plant construction. But then, most recently, I've been helping out with your new wastewater outfall. While that was all in construction, I was also working with a, a whole cast of a whole bunch of subject matter experts on an analysis of your wastewater system as part of the, the general sewer plan, which we're discussing here today. So to start with kind of a, a big overview of your wastewater system, your wastewater utility is comprised of almost half a million miles of sewer pipes, ranging from an inch and a half diameter to 36-inch diameter. With that, and this is kind of an interesting number, you have 21 different pump stations, which is actually a heap of a lot of pump stations for a city of this size. I think it's due to being on an island and on, on the water. You also have one wastewater treatment plant that was built back in the 90s. Something that's, maybe not unique or, but it is worth noting, you have a combined sewer system. So pretty common with more historic communities in Washington. Back in the day, they just put one pipe in the ground and they sent sewer and storm to it. So your system's highly responsive to rainfall events. And that's going to show up here in a couple of spots as we're talking through all of this. So general sewer plan, similar to water system plan codified in the WAC. There's a little more leniency on when you want to do a general sewer plan than a water system plan. But generally, it's an important tool for planning your, your capital expenditures, maintaining your system and that type of thing. There's a, it's, Department Ecology is the regulator that oversees general sewer plans. This is a great time to be doing one because you're also doing comprehensive planning across the board. So we make sure what we're showing is in line with others. So the structure of our report will have seven chapters, an introduction chapter. The next four chapters I'll touch on here tonight, that's your demographic growth, wastewater projections, collection system analysis, wastewater treatment plant analysis, and then also that all leads into your capital improvement program. So getting right into it with the demographic growth. So at the very beginning, you know, when we're looking at a 20-year forecast, we need to come up with some numbers to base growth of the city, which then correlates to increased wastewater demands. So the, the basis of that, we didn't really come up with anything ourselves here. So Skagit County had an allocation resolution for population growth. We accepted that. One thing we wanted to make sure we were doing is coordinating with the other plans that were in process so that we were showing the same thing that everyone else was. So there's consistency there. Also really important in terms of wastewater is not just knowing where the growth is going to happen and how many new people are going to be coming to the city. Also understanding where they're going to end up is important because sewer system is effectively like a big watershed, like a river system with streams and, you know, more significant creeks and flowing into larger trunk lines that could be looked at like rivers, all ending up your treatment plant. So we looked at the distribution of growth was based on your land capacity analysis, the most recent one that was done. Identified a couple key areas of growth along Commercial Avenue, but then also out by Shark's Corner. That wasn't going to be all the growth you're going to see, of course, throughout the city. So we, we allocated a significant portion of the anticipated to those areas and then just kind of trickled the rest of it around, just assuming, you know, a kind of uniform rate for the rest of the places. One, one thing then, now that we know how many new folks are going to be in the city, we know where they're going to be. We made an assumption that the wastewater flows would grow with population, very standard, more people, more wastewater. We assumed that for both residential and commercial growth. We didn't assume that there would be an increase in industrial discharges during the planning horizon. So with that, we used all of this to come up with projections of wastewater flow, but also loading. And that's particularly important for your wastewater treatment plant where, you know, the number of gallons of sewer is one thing, but it's also really important what's in it. So we projected all those out. That informs your wastewater treatment plant analysis. And again, that spatial distribution informs your collection system analysis. So, which is perfect segue into the collection system analysis. So one of the things we did as part of this project or plan is we constructed a sewer model for the city. City previously did not have a sewer model. Now you do. This was based upon your GIS information. We brought in all your pipes, all your pump stations, your treatment plant. As we were building the model, we also went out to strategic areas within your system and actually conducted flow monitoring. So from, for several months focused on a wet weather period, because again, you're a combined sewer and we need to know how rainfall impacts your combined sewer. We were collecting flow monitoring information that can be used to calibrate that model. At the same time, we are also collecting rainfall information at your treatment plant. One thing that's worth noting is when we built this model, we made the assumption, folks that may have been hearing about the CSO pump station project. folks that may have been hearing about the CSO pump station project, that's in has been designed, is about to be constructed. And that's meant to address surcharging along Q Avenue during rainfall events. And it's probably more appropriate to say mitigate because there's always a, you know, 50, 100-year storm event out there. And we'll touch a little bit on return period of storm interval, storm events here on the next slide. But now we have this tool. So the next step was to layer in your future growth and run and see your system performance. So getting ahead of myself a little bit. This is just an interesting slide showing the actual calibration effort. So this plot, there's rainfall data at the top in blue. That's recorded your wastewater treatment plant. Then on the bottom, the more jagged kind of green line, that's actually your observed flows at this flow monitoring point. And then the orange lines are the model predicted flows for the same time period. So you can see here, it's a pretty close approximation. It's not necessarily perfect. We could spend a lot of money and time trying to make it perfect, but from the purposes of, you know, long-term planning, this model is built and calibrated well for what we're trying to do here. So moving into it, the next step here was to actually run, layer in your future growth and then run the model. So we ran through a 10-year event. That's kind of a standard practice for planning level sewer modeling is to model around a 10-year event. And again, you know, there's always the potential for a storm out there that will completely overwhelm the system. So it's a balancing act between coming up with too many capital projects versus not enough. So we ran the model. This slide is, there's actually some shading in there showing pipes that are under capacity, surcharged, that type of thing. Generally, we recommended a project if you had excessive surcharging in a pipe, you had a pump station force main above 10 feet per second, which just in the wastewater industry, that's a rip and flow rate that can compromise pipe integrity over time. Or also if your pump station demands that were forecasted significantly differed from the pump station capacity that we had. So all in all, there's a couple areas of interest on here, but generally speaking, when you look at this map, most of it's green. It looks, it looks fairly good. One thing that also is a side benefit of this, now the city has this model. So as growth occurs, those types of things, that's a tool in your, in your toolbox to decide how you want to manage that kind of thing. So moving on into wastewater treatment plant analysis. Again, as I mentioned earlier, your treatment plant was built in the 1990s. It's covered by a conventional NPDs permit, which means it was designed to remove biological oxygen demand and total suspended solids. This treatment plant does have the ability to do some seasonal nutrient or also nitrogen removal, kind of use those a little interchangeably throughout all this. You also have an incinerator for biosolids management, which is a little unique for Anacortes and of course, Bellingham being the main people around that have incinerators. The figure here is an overall process schematic of your plant. So each one of these components has a capacity and, you know, can support a certain amount of demand. And our whole process here was, you know, upper left, this plant was designed with something in mind. Upper right, we forecasted new things. And then on the bottom, that's your permit limits. And so we went through each one of those unit processes as well as all of them combined and assessed your ability to meet your permit requirements into the future. And generally speaking, there was a few things that we recommended, some upgrades needed, those types of things. Not a heck of a lot came out of this, but I will note, you know, this is for this permit limits. And then there's a caveat here that comes, and that is future regulations. So Ecology in 2022 issued basically a second permit to any wastewater treatment plant that discharges to the Salish Sea called the Puget Sound Nutrient General Permit. Could probably talk for hours on the Puget Sound Nutrient General Permit in part because it was invalidated this year. And Ecology, I'm going to have myself here, but regardless, that nutrient general permit required planning for nitrogen removal, planning for optimization of your existing plant, but then also what a full-scale implementation of nitrogen removal will be at your specific plant. Since that has been invalidated, Ecology has published a revised draft version that has opt-in, opt-out kind of criteria for coverage under that permit. There's also some language on what will happen if you opt out. The bottom line here, Ecology fully intends to regulate nitrogen discharges to Salish Sea at some point in the future. And then the kind of further bottom line here, your, your plant was not designed to do that. You have some, some capacity to do it, but not near what the levels they're talking about the need being. So one of the things that happened is under the prior nutrient general permit, the city worked with another consultant and took a look at full-scale implementation and what that would take and the relative cost of it. And that's something that we have included into the capital program, just so we're keeping our eye on it. It's still, there's a lot of gray around it, but we know it's coming and we'll just keep it on our radar and make sure we're, we're thinking of it. So and that brings us then to our capital improvement program here.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Young.
Just one back to the slide previous. Just curious about the Ecology intends to regulate discharges of nitrogen. Is there any timeline as to, you know, is it sort of five years they fully expect to be engaged in it? And, you know, you know, I, I'm sure everybody's trying to save the sound or because I love the picture of, you know, what it depicts in part of that goal, but is there sort of a timeline? Because it seems like they backed away a little, backed up just a little bit to give others a running start to being able to implement this because I'm sure it'd be expensive. So is there kind of a timeline that we're working on in this initial thought?
So there hasn't been an official timeline announced yet. You know, they, they have, they've, they've published that draft opt-in permit that will be covering probably a similar timeline to the one prior, which was a five-year period. So that's five years of optimization planning, that kind of thing, not necessarily full-scale implementation. They're still working on that. And I guess as a preview in the CIP, what we've planned is in the zero to six-year timeline, we're going to be looking at optimization.
I got it.
Six to 10-year, we're going to be implementing some of that optimization. And then on the 10 to 20-year horizon, we have that number for that full-scale upgrade hanging out there, kind of in the farther. But there's still a lot of gray on all that. And also just to be, you know, the last one didn't make it that far. Who knows what's going to happen with the, with the next round of permitting. So.
Thank you.
All right. All right, capital improvement program. So next, we took all these projects, all these things we've identified, we broke them down into categories. This is just kind of housekeeping. WW projects, those are collection system. Those are broken down into gravity sewer projects, force main projects, pump station projects. We also have WWTP wastewater treatment plant projects. And then general projects, these are kind of overall utility-related efforts that maybe don't necessarily benefit collection system over wastewater treatment plant or vice versa. So those are general sewer. We came up with a prioritization that's based on existing conditions, based on projected growth, those types of things. We also worked to, you know, spread things out the best we could. So we didn't have years where we had tons of expenditure and years where we didn't. So getting into that here, and I guess also a part of this is a lot of the work that we did within our plan focused on capacity, right? That's just one mechanism that leads to a project. We also relied heavily on city operations fat staff too, to understand like, hey, this thing's falling apart. And so we built in those projects as well. So I'm not going to talk through every single one of these projects. Gravity sewer projects. There's an annual INI reduction program that I know everyone's aware of. We also had an extension potentially to Bill, to Bill Heights out there as well. Force main projects, a couple here identified in that 10 to 20 as growth occurs. Some assets are starting to look kind of marginal in terms of capacity. So we said 10 to 20 years horizon, we should be keeping our eye on these, see if growth happens the way we think it does. So not necessarily near term, but, you know, keep an eye on it in future. We do have one project here. I actually updated this, say this project will be done this year. We have a, we have force main that's cracked right now. And we're going to be replacing that. But at the same time, we identified that as undersized for future flows. So we're upsizing it because we have to touch it anyway. So pump station projects, kind of the gamut here. Like I said, you have a bunch of pump stations, various ages and that kind of thing. Some of these we've identified probably need to be upsized in the future. Some of them have old pumps, that kind of thing. So we have a mixture of different pump station projects here to address those various needs. One of these two, pump station 16, that's a project this year. So that's going to be, that's going to be done by the end of year. Wastewater treatment plant projects, this is the bulk of the projects on the list. Now, there, there's a couple themes there. As I mentioned, for one, your treatment plant's 30 years old. A lot of your equipment is original, 30-year-old equipment. Wastewater inherently is corrosive. It's, it's very, it's a challenging environment for equipment to last in. So you do have a fair amount of stuff that's kind of coming up on that replacement interval. I'll touch the first three projects to the question earlier. This is that nitrogen removal regulation question. So again, zero to six years, we're looking at optimization modeling. Six to 10 years, we're implementing some of this. 10 to 20 years, we anticipate we'll have to be doing an upgrade to the plant to address that. Also touched on right here, talked about a little bit earlier, but we had the CSO pump station, which is we've really just been waiting for the outfall to be done because it connects into the outfall and that's going to help with the Q Avenue surcharging. After that, just a number of different projects related to condition of your various pieces of equipment. Help on different pages of those. And then lastly, just the general wastewater project, couple kind of programmatic things. Some roof structures, HVAC on the facilities, a new, a new vehicle, those kinds of things, just overall, you know, kind of general wastewater type stuff. So with that, we get into, we know our projects, we need to build up a project cost for these. So we looked at the construction costs. Maybe that doesn't so much pertain to the vehicle, but we looked at construction costs and we had a number of factors that we put on top of that so we could represent an, an overall project cost for the city, not just looking at what it costs to build it, but all the other things that go into that. And with that, we came up with some overall numbers for the city. Now, obviously, we have individual numbers for each one of those projects. This is just a summary. Couple ways of looking at it here, we have cost by priority, basically zero, six, six to 10, 10 to 20. We also have cost by category. So what we're showing here is zero to six, six to 10, kind of an equivalent amount on those, and then a larger amount in that 10 to 20-year horizon. As I mentioned it earlier, we have not only aging equipment at your wastewater plant, we also have that pending future regulation that we're going to have to comply with, and that's driving the single largest project categories, your wastewater treatment plant with a pretty significant number there, of course. And overall, we're total CIP is looking at $244,500,000. So part, part of the later sections of this, looking at next steps now, we're working with the city on the completion, our financial section, and obviously we'll touch on that here a little bit. Then we're going to be putting together the draft plans, submitting that to the city. They've reviewed most of the sections already. This will just be the whole thing pulled together. And then we'll be getting that off to Ecology to get their review and hear their thoughts on everything. So with that, I, anyone having questions?
All right. Yeah, questions before we get into the financial piece?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Fantine.
Yeah, I had a question earlier. First of all, thank you very much for the presentation. That was super informative. I kind of had a question on how your, I'm probably not even going to say this right, like assigning you. So you talked about that, like, we're anticipating a majority of the growth being along the Commercial Avenue corridor out at Sharp's Corner, which I think we're maybe not as sure about anymore. But and then you mentioned that there'd be like a sprinkling through the other areas. I'm, can you talk a little bit more about that? Because there's a lot of zoning and, and changes that are going to allow for density in other areas. So how much sprinkling are, are we kind of talking about? Like a little more about that?
Yeah, so the, the approach we did is, you know, quite often you'll hear like, okay, we have a 2% a year or whatever the number is, right? And if we were to look at it sprinkling, we could just assume that the entire city, we get that many new people across the whole city. And what we did instead is we, then we had these numbers in terms of percentage growth. And then we pulled out of that these specific areas where we had a little better data, like maybe there's X number of homes in this area that are going to be new. So we kind of took away from that overall percentage for those areas. And then we just assumed, you know, consistent across the board, every community, you know, the total population in every little spot is increased by that, that fixed percentage.
Okay, kind of on that same line, do we, or does this plan or kind of what we're, what we're recommending, is that based off of like, for instance, in my neck of the woods in the West Streets, we get a lot of flooding up there. And I know that the sewer is kind of old up there, but we've also zoned it quite differently for more, more infill. And I guess my question would kind of be like, do we need to like fix some of that sewer stuff before we grant the permitting for, for the infill and before we allow for the increased density? Is that something that like we should be considering?
I, I would say there, there probably is some decision-making to be made at the, the tail end of this plan, especially now that we have the model on how we want to address that kind of situation. And just how you want to approach future development and that kind of thing, and, and what kind of assessment you want to do in the onset. It's kind of outside of the scope, I think, of a general sewer plan. But I, I think it's a good thing to be thinking about now because we do have that new tool for the city that you can be a little more I, I would say analytical on how you're approaching future growth.
Okay, and one of, one last question. When we're, when we're looking at kind of what we're doing and, and what we're replacing, does the plan incorporate any kind of like green infrastructure or like nature-based solutions? So like rain gardens, permeable pavement, like steam, stream banks, that kind of thing. Does it talk about that? Or is it just about kind of replacing pipes and the, the equipment or?
Yeah, I think there's a little, sewer plans and storm plans are always a little inter, interlaced, right, with especially when a combined city. I think, you know, we've identified needs for future projects. We've kind of looked at upsizing pipes for capacity. The next step on literally all these projects we identified is probably going to be, you know, pre-design and alternatives analysis for how you get there. And at that time, you could look into alternative kind of ways to maybe more redirect flow from the system as opposed to just conveying it down to your treatment plant. That's something that could be considered. We didn't get into a ton of alternatives analysis and what we were doing, we were just identifying problems and relative costs to, to address, but that's something that could be considered.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Young?
Thank you. Just one follow up about, um, part of this whole effort is really about water quality, yes, going out into the sound, going out and nitrogen is a big part of that. And, and nitrogen affects oxygen and all of the things that's associated with having a healthy environment. So, you know, it, in that line, those are the, that's one of the reasons we're doing what we're doing right now, you know? And part of that is, uh, how do we get there? But you know, 10, 20 years from now is a long time. And at the level of discharge is concerning. So at, if that is the case, what are part of the causes? Is it what people are flushing or runoff? Or what is creating that higher level of nitrogen? And, and are there also additional steps that can be done to mitigate what we are putting out as we begin to work through other solutions?
Yeah. So I, I think you, you touched on it there and it's the gamut. So an ecology isn't just looking at wastewater treatment plants, although that is a focus. They also, if you read some of the language they use, they talk about watershed impacts too. So this is, this is runoff, those kinds of things as well that they're looking at. Obviously we're, we're largely focused on wastewater treatment plant here because that's kind of our component of it all. And I would say it's not that we're just waiting 20, 20 years to do something about it. That's why we have those near term projects for modeling on how you can optimize performance of your existing plant to start doing some stuff now. And then also we have some implementation of maybe some more capital projects to better, you know, improve the performance of your existing plant before we have to go ahead and, and do the full upgrade. And that's in, that's in concert with what ecology wants to do.
I totally understand that. And I understand that what we're doing is we're reacting and trying to, you know, help the sound. But part of the impetus for making that happen, all of these factors, I, I, I love an octopus because the octopus has got one body and many tendrils. And so in this case, our water quality is really all about all of those inputs that are coming in to affect what we are putting out into the ocean. And so it's interesting that, you know, as we work through those processes to try to find other solutions that we, you know, just in my personal opinion, we, we can ignore those inputs that are also coming. Because if we only react to what we can do in discharging and we're not mitigating what's coming to us. I, I don't know how we ever really get there because again, if those inputs continue to be exacerbated and increase, we, we're in this cycle of continuing to be, have to address the outcome of that. So I think that it really has to be sort of a little joint thing in the education process. While we work through deciding as a city what we want, what works for us and what's not. But you know, in my opinion, we absolutely cannot ignore all of those inputs that come into it. Because the runoff from fertilizers, the runoff from all of those things that come into our system. And then so that capacity, so I would love to see a little bit more. But I totally hear what you're saying. And I know part of this laser discussion is about that outcome that you're putting out. But I honestly don't believe we can have a thorough conversation about what's happening without including those inputs. Thank you.
Mayor Miller, Mr. McDougall?
Thank you for the presentation. And I actually just had a kind of a quick question about the capital facilities plan or kind of like the, the zero to six year timeline and the very detailed table. Thank you. The most recent capital facilities plan goes out to like 2029. And I think we're projecting around 22, 23 million in project spend. And so this table here doesn't really list specific dates, but at 33 million for the next six years, that's basically, I'm assuming that covers 2030 into maybe 2031. So we're looking at some, somewhere in the range of 10 million in projects that are kind of the, toward the tail end of this next capital facilities plan. Is that a rough decent estimate? Or do we have a sense for like which items on the presentation are tied to the existing capital facilities plan? The table doesn't note it, so it just says kind of zero to six.
Councilmember McDougal, that's exactly why we're bringing these forward to you guys. Is because we're revamping your capital facilities plans. There, there's some projects, obviously they, they carry over there. They were important six years ago, whenever they did it, they're important still. But there are other things we found because you didn't have a model. And so now we know a little bit more about the, you know, the pump stations and the pipe, the pipes. We knew your wastewater treatment plan, I think you've, when I first got here, I thought you had to replace it right away and, but you don't. So I hope that answers your question. So yeah, that's why we're, we're trying to prep you for what you are about to see in the capital facilities plan discussion. Because it's, it's different than what you've seen in the past.
Okay. Yeah, that's perfect. Because I, I was kind of like digging through two sets of tables really quickly to see like what's what. And so yeah, that clarifies it perfectly. And the model looks really cool too. So thank you.
Yeah. Just one thing about the model too, that's handy is that we could do concurrency modeling. So if something wants to go in there, we can, at some point we'll have to say no. Because we'll, we'll actually have the information to say that we can't, we don't have the capacity in the pipe for you to build. So getting in front of that, I can't remember which council member brought that up. But that is something that we have to think about as a community too, to try to get ahead of those things. Because someday the door has to shut where we just can't allow any more flow to be added to the sewer or we get ahead of it.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
So a general question, and thank you for the presentation and the report. And I think this is probably a question for Mr. Rayum too. What is our capacity? Or for Mr. Walker, what is our capacity? And what is our current usage? Roughly?
Our permitted capacity is four and a half million gallons a day.
Okay, four and a half million gallons a day we're permitted for?
Based on the flows and loading, we're, we're quite a ways, we're good in terms of what the plant was designed to do in terms of BOD and TSS removal. So that kind of gets back to the caveat that you mentioned, that if, if the rules change, that whole equation is going to shift.
Right. Yeah, I maybe didn't hit hard enough on that in the presentation that under your current.
Can you speak? Thank you.
Yeah, under your current permit through the planning period, your, your plant looks great in terms of capacity. The, the challenge is, is that we know that future regulation is coming.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
And sometimes I'm not sure if I want to know, I, I want to demand from ecology to know the regulations. And sometimes I don't want to, because we were here at council eight years ago. And we said, hey, the regulation's changing, you guys need to build a new plant right now. And, and we were sifting through different versions of plans that the council was going to vote on. So again, I'm, I'm thankful of the great work they do over there, keeping our 30 plus year plan going. And, and again, having this model, we've never had with a capital facilities plan building it. So this will be leaps and bounds ahead of preparing that. So.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yeah, that's, I just want to say thank you for this report and presentation. I mean, this is something we've been discussing since I remember when we did the 2019 comp plan. And our concern of knowing that we have to continue to provide a level of service, whether it's police, fire, sewer, water. And if we don't have a model and understand where our weaknesses are, we, we, we can't provide an appropriate level for existing customers nor accommodate new, new development. So this really allows us to identify where our weakest points are and then be strategic in how we use our dollars and leverage them so that it, it makes it a, an enjoyable place to be and have minimal, you know, overflow backup situations. And I, so thank you for that. And I also want to say that our wastewater treatment plant is really incredible. If you ever get to tour it, it's awesome. It's in mint condition even at its age. So, well, the, the staff does a really good job keeping it functioning and at a really high level. So we're lucky that while it's older and things are always changing, we've been very responsible in the equipment and we have currently. So well done to Public Works.
Are there any questions before we switch over to the finance piece of this? All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Mr. You're, you're going to stay here though, in case we have some other, okay.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Hello, Public. All right, Rhonda Peck, Finance Manager. We're going to talk tonight about our cost and revenue outlook for sewer and storm tonight. So I'll start first with looking at just our current estimated operating expenses and capital expenses for sewer. The lighter blue is our operating expenses. Those are estimated to grow at roughly 4% annually. The bright blue line is the current draft of the capital facilities plan. So just that six year outlook, Councilwoman McDougal that you were asking about. So those numbers are shown in the bright blue. Now, what does that all mean for the cost and the revenues? Well, if we look at what is the revenue that's required, you know, to support the current plan, it's, it's both those costs combined. If you look at 2025, it's a bit of an outlier. You'll see in the slide that $8.1 million of fund balance was utilized last year to fund, or this year, to fund our cost model. And that was done intentionally, that was utilizing the, the bond proceeds that we got historically and we needed to utilize those. And then also I think folks are aware that we have roughly $8.8 million in grant revenue as well. All right, this green overlay that you see now, those are our current services revenue. So based on our current model of increasing annually, with CPI, we're looking at 3% per year. So you can see that there's a large gap. So we currently do not have the services revenue to support our expense outlook for the next six years. Any questions on that before I move on to storm? Okay. So similar look and feel, operating expenses, capital expenses of the storm plan that you saw previously. Revenue that's needed, we did utilize some fund balance to fund or support our 2025 budget. Services revenue outlook for the next six years. And you'll again see that we do have a little bit of a gap there. All right. That's the news I had to share tonight. More to come. We are currently scheduled to talk about the full CFP review. That's going through each of the projects for each of the utilities on September 22nd. So more to follow there. You'll have the one pagers and be able to look at more detail. And then we do have another council meeting where we're going to talk about revenue currently scheduled for October 6th. So more to come.
Okay. Any questions on that happy news?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Now, just, I always love how your language is so concise and clear. You know, it's not easy to misunderstand. So for clarity purposes, I, I love how you said, we already don't have an, we're not going to have enough revenue right now. That's the bottom line for our need, which is very clear. And then that also means that we have to look deeper into how we meet or what decisions we're going to have to make. Did I misinterpret that in any way?
No, you're a hundred percent spot on.
All right, all right, good. I just wanted that clarity, not only just to be said, but for the public to understand that, you know, even in all of the efficiencies that the city implements, because it really does a, a wonderful job in my opinion of using dollars as best as we can. We just simply to do the things that we need to do or have to do, we're going to have to look deeper and harder at what we're doing and how we get there. Have I misinterpreted?
Nope, that is exactly correct.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Of course. Anything else?
Mayor Miller? Mr. McDougal?
Naive question, just to make sure that services revenue number is, is needed to cover all of the costs, not just the light blue.
That's correct. You know, some other alternatives are, the teams are currently exploring. And are there any grant opportunities? Of course, that would help fund some of the capital opportunities that might be out there. And then, you know, there's, there's other things that, that you can consider as far as trying to, to get some money to, to make some changes.
Thank you.
Yep.
The, the good news is we have some real plans with real models that, that will provide counsel hopefully with some real data so they can make some of the difficult decisions that are
Very well said, yeah.
Coming up. So I'll try to end on that. Well, but before I do end, this is open for public comment. I remember the public wants to comment on this one. All right, council, any other?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Mc, Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peck. So these numbers, the bar graphs, or those are a result of what we already had in our capital facilities plan before we're sort of revising it? Is that right? Or is this brand new?
The, the numbers for 2026 through 2031 are brand new numbers. Those are numbers the teams have been working on for the last couple of months to pull together. And those are a result of the big, the larger initiatives that the Public Works teams have been working on. So this six years, the numbers that you see here tonight are a part of that broader 20 year plan that was discussed.
Okay. Well, it's not great news, but it is, like was just said, really good to know where we are for real as we plan.
Yes.
Thanks.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And next up is item 6B. This is an ordinance 5004, amending AMC section 5 dot 04 dot 030 regarding business licensing. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Hoagland has this one. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. This is just a little bit of housekeeping tonight. We at the City of Vanacortus for our business licensing, we use the state's BLS service, Business Licensing Service. They have made a change to the criteria for requiring a city business licenses for those businesses that do not have a business within the city limits. So currently that threshold is set at $2,000. If a business earns less than $2,000 a year within the city limits and does not have a storefront in the city, they don't have to buy a business license in 2026, that threshold is going to go up to $4,000. And this ordinance just reflects that change. So the, the state had, I believe it was in October timeframe that they have as the target date for getting this completed for those entities that use the BLS. So this is what's before you tonight. I put on this approval date of the eighth, which is next Monday, because being an ordinance does have the two week rule. I'm happy to bring that back on the consent agenda next week and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. So how much does a business license cost?
$50 initially, and I believe it's $5 renewal every year. City of Vanacortus tries to be business friendly. We have low business license rates and also don't charge BNO tax trying to be business friendly here in the city.
That's great. And then how many out of town businesses that operate here, do, do we have a rough idea of what that number is?
I could probably get that from the state. I don't have that offhand though.
Okay, I was just curious, just kind of a trivia fact. Thanks. Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
When it says businesses do not maintain a place of business, is that excluding businesses that don't have a storefront? So like somebody that owns something and puts a storefront on a commercial? Does this take into consideration home businesses, somebody on Etsy that knows that they're going to make $3,500 a year and is technically working from their home, but has a business license?
Yeah. So in the, in that case, that would be considered. And I, I probably used the term storefront incorrectly. It's if, if the, the address of the business is within the city, then it's considered to be a, a city business.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young?
Just curious, it, it doesn't appear that it's really not a lot of revenue, is it? I mean, just the revenue, it would. I mean, just the revenue it would generate, um, between the 2,000 going to the 4,000.
Right.
Dollar. It, it's really not a lot of revenue.
None material. Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Uh, Ms. Moul.
This seems very straightforward. So I move to approve ordinance 5004, amending AMC 504030.
Yes. When I.
Yeah. Uh, the, it's a two, the two-reed. So that sounds like a, you would motion to say, we put this on the consent agenda for next.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Thank you.
Great. I don't think we need a second for that. So we'll, uh, but thank you for moving it forward. I always like to do that. So, okay. We'll bring it to the consent agenda. And if there's any further, uh, questions, feel free to reach out to myself or Mr. Hoagland.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next up is item 6C. This is a resolution, uh, 3185 waiving the competitive bidding requirements for the maintenance and repair of flight pumps. This is a discussion item with possible action. Mr. Rayum.
Good evening again. Uh, before you is resolution 3185, uh, waiving the competitive, competitive bidding requirements for maintenance and repair of flight pumps. Uh, Whitney Equipment is the sole repair, uh, company in the state of Washington for flight pumps. Um, I ran into this every city I've been to. So that uses flight pumps. So it's a, it's, it's no joke. There's literally one company that, that's all that's been licensed to work on flight pumps in the state of Washington. So that's my presentation, sir.
Okay. Questions?
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Fantini.
Unless there's any burning questions, I move the, the resolution 3185 be approved waiving the state competitive bidding requirements for the regular maintenance and repair of flight pumps and accessories performed by Whitney Equipment Company, Inc. As the sole source supplier.
It's on my turn in a second, but I'll go with a motion by, uh, Mr. Fantini and a second by Mr. Young to approve resolution 3185. Any additional discussion? Mr. Franciac, vote please.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yeah.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubick?
Yes.
Mr. Fantini?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, no further business for the council. I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Have a great night. Thanks.